All right, good afternoon. It is January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, the time is four P M. This is a special meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. At this time, we will determine if a quorum is present.
Fiona McDay, present.
Rich McDowell, present.
Lee and Arto, present.
Matt Slayton, present.
Corey Hawksworth, present.
I Sam Slayton, present. We do have a quorum established. We'll now have our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Hawksworth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
He is amazing. People, he did, he did.
I started thinking about it.
All right, Mr. Hawksworth, if you will lead us in prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you for this time today. Thank you for all the people that are here, all the time and energy they've put into this district and that they do on a current, uh, consistent basis. Please be with us and help us make decisions that are in the best interest of the students and not ourselves. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, do we have anyone sign up for a public forum? All right, we're gonna move into our information only section.
All right, so we are here today, um, to present a recommendation. Our Bond and Growth Planning Committee commenced back before the Christmas break. And so we have, um, if you'll, do you have this, are you, will you advance the slides as a clicker? Yeah, if you'll go ahead. So we, um, just wanted to introduce, first of all, our community, uh, committee liaisons and staff representative. We have Josh Combs and Randy Feit here today and Coach Todd Rogers, as well as, um, some of our committee members I see out there in the audience. So if, uh, if you'll pull that next one up, I'll let them talk a little bit about that. But we did have thirty, uh, committee members that came back for the reconvene out of our original. Um, obviously, our students had graduated and weren't able to join us as they're off doing amazing things. But we do have a list here of our thirty committee members that were made either both or one of the two meetings. I would also like to recognize Dr. Lizzie Johnson's in the audience and she's here with us today. She facilitated for us last year and then came back, um, on her own. Um, and just wanna make sure everybody understands that, that she was not paid to come back. She came back on her own to facilitate our last two reconvene meetings and we greatly appreciate her and her dedication to this district. So I would like to turn it over now to, um, our, our representatives, Josh Combs and Randy Feit and Coach Rogers. So I think they have some presentation for us.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll get us, uh, started. Dr. Carpenter, thanks, thanks for having me here, Mr. Slayton, members of the board. Appreciate you guys having us here. I'm here joined by, uh, Randy Feit and Coach Rogers. We're gonna present to you guys the findings. Really excited to be here. Randy and I are co-chairs of the Bond Oversight Committee. We've also both been very engaged in the Bond Planning Committee. I've been involved in, in the last two that have convened as well as, as the one prior, the, the bond that passed. And it's been my privilege to be a part of those committees, uh, and Argyle ISD. I've got four, uh, children that have been in and through the district. I have a senior who's graduating this year, uh, headed A and M, uh, very excited about that. Uh, don't, don't do that.
I'm surprised he didn't make his noise.
No, no, I'm, you're not gonna get me to work. You're not gonna get me to work, sorry.
Okay, good.
I'm not gonna hang the horns either. You guys are all right. I will, I will tell you, I had the, I had the best season, my SMU Mustangs had the best season in forty years. I am a little bit proud of that.
That caught you.
Um, so, so, yeah, uh, I'll, let me, let me, I'm gonna jump back a slide, actually. I, I just wanna say, uh, you know, this, this committee reconvened from the last time. And, and I thought that was a fantastic approach because we were able to start fast. We received some homework, I think a lot of people prepared. And a lot of people on that committee had heard a lot of things from community members. So I thought that was a really, really good start. Another thing I wanted to point out is I thought it was a fantastic touch to have the, the table facilitators that were there. What that did was, in my, in my experience, it gave us an interactive conversation with the people that are occupying these spaces, the administrators and the teachers, and they're seeing those things. So when you have an idea as a community member, as a parent, you, you may not see it completely right. So I thought that was a really nice touch. Uh, and this really was a wide swath of people. Uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of the area of Argyle was represented, a lot of different people. Uh, as an example, Ron Smith, Mayor Pro Tem here, uh, for Argyle, he was there. He sat at my table. It was really good to hear information from that side of things. So I thought, I thought it was a great committee. Um, yeah, that's exactly what this slide says here, so. Okay, so, uh, the, the charge of the committee, uh, very clear and understandable, right? The first thing is all about the students. What do the students need, okay? And then, uh, we, as we look at that, what, what we need to consider is what are the values? What are the interests of the community? Of course, the community is gonna vote for this bond, yea or nay. So absolutely, we can, we should consider the community. And then we should consider facts, data, and there was a lot of data. It's one of the, the reasons that I think reconvening was a, was a good idea. There is a lot of information to consider. Um, and it's, it's, it takes some time to get your mind wrapped around. Um, and then we're supposed to, to, uh, develop a plan in line with the district's priorities. And absolutely, we, we spent, uh, both last time we met and this time we met, we, we spent about an entire session looking at finances. What can we afford? What do we need and compare that to what we can afford? So I thought that was very well done. Um, we met three times. As I mentioned, there was some homework. Uh, we met before the end of the year and then, uh, concluded in, in January. Um, and here we are today. This is one thing I wanted to share before I brought Randy up. Just, just to give you guys, cause I know most of you were not in these meetings. I just wanted to share my feelings.
There were no board members in the meetings.
There were no board members in the meetings, yes. But I wanted to share my personal feeling coming out of those meetings. The, the first session a year ago, or the first committee group a year ago, when I came out of that, I felt, um, a little concerned. Um, I, in the room, I felt some tension. Um, I don't know necessarily disagreement, but, um, I think it was a little bit sticky. Um, my feelings coming out of this next, uh, meeting were quite different. I felt very positive. I felt like there was a stronger sense of alignment. Of course, there wasn't perfect alignment and you wouldn't hope that there would be. This is a very diverse community with a lot of diverse interests. There's gonna be different perspectives, but I felt a stronger sense of unity coming out of this. And I, I hope that's representative of what we're gonna present to you all today, that it is a, a more unifying plan that we can hopefully get approved because I think the students and the teachers and this community needs this bond. So with that in mind, I'll hand it over to Randy Feit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josh. Good afternoon, President Slayton, Dr. Carpenter, and the board. So the committee was asked to look at the district needs in three key areas. The first being new construction projects, so what is needed due to growth, right? The next, existing facility capital improvements, so what's needed at our existing facilities? And finally, operations and infrastructure. So what are the needs related to keeping the operations going in a fast-growth district? So when we look at, at what are the needs related to growth, our biggest resource is the demographic study. Um, so the board is well aware of this, but I'm gonna say this for anybody listening. Um, the demographic study is a study done by a third-party consultant. It's one that's used by a majority of the North Texas school districts because of their expertise. Um, it's done twice a year and each one of these studies can be found on the Argyle ISD website. So I would strongly encourage anybody who's researching this bond, who's, who's interested at all, please go to the website and look at those studies. That's what we use as a committee. Uh, I think if you, uh, take any time at all and look at what our enrollment looks like in five or ten years, there's no question that growth is coming. And so as a committee, we agreed that, uh, we need elementary number six and middle school number two during this next bond window. We also recommend that although the building for middle school number three is not actually needed during the next bond window, it would be very wise to complete the design process now. It can take up to two years to really go through programming, design, uh, bidding and permitting before any dirt can even be turned for any project. So if we wait, uh, to start that process until the next bond window, we're gonna be behind the eight ball again and have a facility that's needed with overcrowded, uh, middle school one and, and, and two. Um, and finally, uh, with the two high schools, uh, the need for a full baseball and softball facility at Canyon Falls Campus is a must. And with that, I'll ask Coach Rogers to come speak real quick about that need and then I'll come back.
Good afternoon, Coach Rogers.
You're giving me a mic. Sketchy practice.
The committee learned about that too, wouldn't they?
Sketchy practice. Ladies and gentlemen, the, uh, Argyle High School baseball softball facility is, is a big deal. It's a big deal for our community. Uh, obviously, those two sports have been very important to the success of our athletic program and it, it's put us on the map across not only the state of Texas, but the nation. I mean, we've been national champs in baseball for a couple of years. So it's imperative that we have facilities. And I, I think our community doesn't quite understand the scope of that need. And I, I wanna, I wanna ask everybody, go back and watch this broadcast and send this out is because, uh, the essence of, of, of two schools practicing in one facility is, is not even an option. I think you need to look at some examples like South Lake, Allen, uh, and even the Plano Schools where they have some, one school with two campuses, top concepts, it, so it doesn't matter. I mean, the ship has sailed in Argyle ISD, we're going to two high schools, all right? So the, it, it is imperative that we build, uh, a baseball softball complex on two, on two campuses. So e- even if we had to go back and redo the one high school concept, uh, it's tragic and it's a safety aspect to have the kids traveling down three seventy-seven. If you haven't, ask Mr. Westrom, he just got here. I mean, traffic was terrible, right? So, so we can't have buses, we can't have buses, sorry. Shots fired, okay? You can't be traveling up and down three seventy-seven and we, we're gonna, I mean, if we have the two-campus concept, we have hundreds of trips a day, right? So it would be the best interest of, of educating our baseball, I mean, we are in the education business, right? So we're educating our baseball and softball kids at two different campuses and have those facilities. So we have two-campus concept that we've adopted, okay? So we need that. So, so regardless, if anybody agrees or disagrees with it, all right? We do need those facilities and it's important that we, that we go out into our communities and we, we have that on the bond and we support, the fact is that we need that because we want those kids to have the best. The number one thing that I've been told from the strategic plan and going to high schools is we wanna provide opportunities for more kids, right? We can't go backwards, we can't go backwards. As I told the bond committee, you, put their situation in, in Chat G P T, put it, put it in A I, go Google Gemini, right? Let's go two high schools, one baseball field, softball field. Results, zero, right? Go put it in there, all right? What, what, what's the next best plan? Let's go, let's leave baseball softball at one school and, and have two high schools, zero results. So thirty people getting together, you can't figure it out. This is the solution. It is a solution, it's gonna be the solution. And, and let me ask, I'm, you gave me the mic, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let, let me put this out there in, in space, okay? Y'all have made seven, all right, ten, twenty million different, all right, educational choices for the kids of Argyle. In nineteen ninety-six, they made an educational choice to go from K eight to K through twelve. It was a choice, right? I choose to run the ball and play good defense. It's a choice that creates success, all right? There's lots of different roadmaps to success that lots of Denton County schools choose. It's just a choice. And I think people are caught up on what they think is the right choice and the bad choice. That's y'all's job to make the choice. It's the people that enforce it and go from there, all right, for it to be its best. And guess what? I get to control, I get to help hire the people, right? There's things I can control and there's things I can't control. And I think we need to see that going forward about selling this bond is we gotta know where we've been to know where we're going. Our values of small town have not changed. Nineteen ninety-six, go talk to two board members, nothing's changed. It's still the small, compartmentalized, conservative community that we want going forward, all right? And I think this bond committee can go out there in the community and sell that concept, but they have to sell it as a big picture. Any questions?
Coach, I, I did have a question. You, you've answered it ad nauseam, but I, I did wanna acknowledge, you, you were here when we, the district made the change to go to K through twelve and, and you.
I came just after.
But you were there with the growing pains.
I'm in the aftermath.
The growing pains of that and, and working with the town and it wasn't a popular opinion to, in the town necessarily.
It was a five-to-two vote and the mayor diabolically opposed it, right? So the town was divided. Sounds kinda similar, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Right?
But I, but I, I wanna acknowledge, like, your, not only your commitment to this district over two decades and, and your expertise, but you've done a great job of just saying, like, this is what's best for the kids and, and we hear it so much, traffic being an issue, crossing railroad tracks, um, the stress it puts on our, our staff and faculty of going up and down. So logically, yes, we, we, we talk a lot about equity. This, this makes sense, right? It, it's a, it's a no-brainer. So I, and, and there's no question you've answered it, but I, I do wanna acknowledge, like, your expertise and you've been here and your experience. And I thank you for, for what you've done for this committee and, and what you've done to get us to where we're at, um, to be able to provide opportunities for kids, so.
Well, believe it or not, I care, okay? I moved to this community and I belong to this community, I'm embedded in this community. I put my kids all through this school, okay? I want the very best, okay? My job is fun. You may have boredom at your job, I don't have boredom in my job. I've got a busy schedule, but it's not boredom. So it, it's fun, I'm all in.
Coach, I got, I got a question.
Okay.
You, you've been running these athletic facilities, um, since, when'd you get, two thousand?
Three.
Three? Tell me, you, cause you're talking about the, the, a facility like this, baseball softball complex is good for the community.
Absolutely.
Can you speak just a little bit how you have seen the fields within the district? Baseball, softball, football, indoor complexes be utilized, tennis be utilized? And how you've met, how that's been available with the community? And, and serve this community well that doesn't have parks?
Well, um, one of the first strategies that was implemented by some of the dads is they put me on the Parks and Recreation Board in Argyle. I went to a couple of meetings, they said, we're not gonna build anything, I got off the board, okay? So I've seen Argyle ISD serve in that capacity. We have to have places for kids to go, okay? Let, let's just flash forward, all right, to construction. Here's what we can have, Leah's telling me, here's what we have, so we're gonna have. So let's move all these youth teams off the existing fields we have, okay? It's, 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 it's quite a task, okay? It's quite a task. AYSA and our youth sports program is paramount to our success. I got dads, six or seven, all right, coaching individual teams and pouring into them, all right? They're talking to me, they're transitioning our kids up to high school. We don't have great baseball softball facilities, all right, at the youth level to grow and nurture them. So they're having to go out and travel to those kinda things.
But they're using, and I, I've come, I mean, isn't, I, I was a beneficiary of those facilities being available for my children.
Absolutely, and that's what, that's what we're doing.
But that baseball softball complex that we have right now, I mean, those, there's, there's batting cages.
Yes.
And those kids are.
It's open full-time. There's kids up there at night, look at the cameras.
They're not on their phone, they're up there, well, they may be on the phone in between hitting sessions or something. But they're, but they're, I mean, that's where you want the kids in this community.
Let me, let me speak to that. It, it's, it's idle time. We, we, we subscribe to, we don't want idle time for our kids. We want them doing something and engaged in something. I just had this conversation with your graduating son this week, you need to get connected, get connected, connected. Because that's all part of the educational process is to keep them connected. Here's the piece of it is, and, and, and everybody says, I, I failed to mention this, I apologize. Baseball softball is just like a gym sport. We would never take two high schools and put them in one gymnasium. You would never do that. You, you practice and you play in the same facility. So, so the piece of it is, our freshmen practice in the morning in that facility, bus one direction. Our JV and varsity practice in the afternoons, they drive in one direction, okay? Or if they had needed it, they, they, we get a ride, we have alternate transportation forms. So, and then they get picked up over there. So we're already doing that challenge, okay? And it, it, it's the best plan currently.
Doesn't, doesn't, I mean, I'd go out to the fields and the, the one we have, baseball soft comp, and I see football teams, youth football.
All fall, practice in the outfield, cause there's just not enough space. There's not, I mean, it, it, I mean, most of these places that have any kind of property are just residents and they don't have the, the manicured fields for these teams to practice on. You think we won a bunch of football games because of me?
Yeah, that's good.
No, we got a good system in place for these kids to play, practice, fall in love with our sports, get connected, okay? There's lots of things we don't have. We don't have ag, we don't have swimming, right? We don't have welding, we don't have shop class, all right? We don't have animal husbandry classes, but what we do have, we are all in on, right? And I think that's, we, we've gotta, we've gotta come to terms as a community to realize we're all in on this and we need to get invested in it and get behind it. It likes to, stop talking about two high schools. We, we have a choke point educationally at middle school. We need a second middle school, we probably need a third middle school so we can all funnel and go fill those buildings at the top and, and, and create great environments. We've won thousands of games at three seventy-seven, we've won hundreds of games over here, okay? So it's irrational to think that we're not gonna be successful to some level. Is there slowdowns? Is there setbacks? Is there, like, growing pains? Absolutely. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it changes. Like I said, it's, it's the people and the, the core values that we have in place is the basis for going forward. You have to know where we've been before you can know where we're going. Nothing's different than nineteen ninety-six. It smells a little different, looks a little bit different, acts a little bit different, but it's still the same. Okay, questions?
Thank you, Coach.
Those easier than I thought, we're good.
All right, so this next set of projects, these are, uh, facilities that we're all very familiar with. Um, there are needs at Hilltop Elementary, uh, the sixth grade center, um, the three seventy-seven campus and the Argyle High School, um, excuse me, Canyon Falls, uh, High School Complex. So, um, I should note that none of these projects, none of these projects here submitted include any student capacity additions at any of these campuses. Uh, really, the Hilltop and Sixth Grade Center are mainly just building component, facilities-related maintenance items. Um, at three seventy-seven, we have the same, but we also have, uh, an expansion to the cafeteria. Uh, we all know that's a, a huge need at that campus. And then at Argyle, Canyon Falls Argyle High School Campus, um, there is a connector, basically, that connects the classroom wings there to improve the circulation at that campus.
And I think you, just real quick, I mean, you, just to reiterate, that's not adding any capacity in there. That is, that is strictly for just the safety and flow of the building.
Randy, can you go back to that slide?
Yes, sir.
And that cafeteria coffee bar expansion, I believe, um, is allowing us to use the coffee bar area for, uh, lunchtime and those kinds of things.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought that's, we had that. And the cafeteria is expanding the kitchen area, uh, for, okay?
The coffee bar over by the auditorium?
Yes.
Okay.
Been able to utilize that as some cafeteria, lunch space. So they have two areas they'd be able to do lunches in.
It's one of the biggest needs. I mean, we had, we had a few things on, in the bond package last go-around at that campus. Uh, but this one's a, I mean, this one's a must, there's really not enough room for, for students to eat in a cafeteria.
I know the committee looked at a couple of options. The option they looked at before the coffee bar kinda came into play was going to renovate the cafeteria in a way, but it was gonna take some classroom space and we knew we didn't wanna do that. Um, so they went back to the, kinda the drawing board with the architects and said, okay, Jeff, Jeff went back with Marty and looked at, okay, if we do the cafeteria, kick out and get some kitchen space and they look at that coffee bar expansion, then it doesn't take any classroom space away.
So even though none of these are adding space, are also not taking away.
Correct.
Any of the, okay. Good? Okay, so also included in the recommendation is land for future elementary school number seven, uh, middle school number three and a third high school, as well as transportation parking. The reality is, there's very little land available right now. If we wait ten years to try and purchase land for our future needs, there will be no land to purchase. Uh, so we really feel strongly that this is an important part of this bond package. Um, there's also, um, money for bus fleet purchases and technology infrastructure. Should be noted that that's not student or staff devices, this is the infrastructure. This is what keeps the internet flowing in this district, so it's definitely a need. So you can see at the bottom there, the grand total of this committee's recommendation is four hundred and twenty-three million, one hundred and seventy thousand. And it also should be noted, this is less than the bond that was on the ballot last May, which was around five hundred and eleven million.
And we did add, um, if you'll go, go to the next slide, we added, we added one in here so they could kinda see the total different packages there, um, from last year to this year. I know you didn't have that slide, but we did have that.
Sorry, I was wrong.
So no, you're good.
Yeah, yeah.
We added that in there so you could kinda see the reduction from the two recommendations, the bond recommendations.
That's big. I mean, from, the committee realizes, we didn't pass the bond last year, right? We were the same committee. Um, we really wanna work hard, we really wanna make sure that this bond passes, uh, it's needed. And so we try to be good stewards and, and try to bring a number that was less than we went up for last time, right? So we really feel like everything that's in here are true needs for this district.
Can you back up one?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna touch on the land acquisition and, and off-site cost is a, is a big component. I don't know that people, off-site is something that I use in my profession, quite honestly. But off-site costs, as I understand, that means, you know, you can buy a piece of land, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily developable. You have to do a lot of things to get that in a position to have a building on it. And some of those things are off the site, off the land, right?
Right.
And those things would be roads.
Site utilities.
Uh, sewer lines, water lines, could be even impact fees and stuff you have to pay and connect. And we've experienced all those things and those can be kinda budget busters on, on a project of some. And in, in Argyle, particularly, and in our whole area, as I've watched, I mean, almost every school that we've built, we've had to build roads with it. I mean, I think we had to build half of Cleaver Gibbs, we had to build half of, uh, Denton Creek. Um, and, you know, we, we do a lot of road building with our schools. And, and there's not a lot of, and, and sometimes you have to extend sewer and water. So land's one cost and then there's all these offsites with it.
Mr. Feit, if you, if you could speak for the committee or even, even just give your thoughts on it. You used a word, you said, we, we need this bond. Can you expound upon that?
We needed the bond last year. Uh, you know, it takes a lot of time, uh, to go back and do the planning, uh, reconvene the group. Um, there's actually talk of legislature where they're only gonna allow you to go for a bond in May and not November, right? So if this next bond doesn't pass, we are really behind, like, there, we have pinch points. Again, if you go back and, and please look at the, uh, demographic study, the numbers are there. I mean, that's what the committee used, we didn't just kinda come up with this stuff on our own. The numbers are there and it shows what the student population is gonna be. If we don't have these new facilities in place, we are gonna be hurting. And, and I don't think the public's gonna like, uh, what the alternative is gonna be. I mean, if you have students coming in and you don't have a, a facility for them, that's when portables come in, that's when things like, you know, we have to have space for students who are coming to Argyle ISD, so.
In, in your experience and your everyday role.
Do you wanna explain that?
Oh, you wanted to explain what you do every day?
Uh, sure, so this, so what I do every day, I'm, I work for a neighboring school district, um, over all the construction, uh, there for, for Lewisville ISD, so.
In that role and in your experience in that role, can you give us an idea? You mentioned portables. Can you give us an idea, estimate, nobody's gonna hold you to it, and, and annual cost of a portable? Certainly, there's the first-year cost and then there's the cost after that.
Um, I wouldn't be able to right this second, I'd have to come up with that. But I mean, I can tell you, I mean, so we went through our fast-growth phase in the nineties and early two thousands, right? I mean, everybody's seen the news, we're actually closing some schools in Lewisville ISD. Um, but the growing pains are there and when you bring portables in, it's a lot more expensive nowadays, even just to move the portable and set it up, costing an enormous amount of money. And so it's not a solution that anybody likes. We would much rather have permanent facilities. And not only that, just from the safety and security standpoint, right? I know when we had portables at Hilltop, there were a lot of people concerned about, you know, students having to go in between the portables and the main building. It's not an ideal situation to have, so.
And, and those were free portables that cost just three hundred thousand dollars, right? Is that?
Loan to us, right?
Yeah, Northwest ISD.
The neighboring district, but we paid for them moving in and out and.
Utilities.
So in an age where we're dealing with legislative funding challenges, right? Maybe they get fixed, hopefully they get fixed. Um, if we, if this doesn't pass and we have to go that route.
Um, if we, if this doesn't pass and we have to go that route, it all comes out of that same bucket of money at that point. There's no INS to pull from at that point. It comes out of M and O, right? So we're, you know, our our financial team here has done amazing things to keep us as as tight as they can and and as in budget as they can. Um, but now you go at even even three hundred thousand of multiple portables if they were free. If somebody loaned them to us. And that was how many years ago? A lot.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah. So seven years ago?
And portables aren't designed to be a forty-year building or even a twenty-year building, right? They're they're not built to the same standard as these other permanent facilities. So, yeah, even if you get some free ones, there are going to be repairs needed on those portables to be able to use them, so.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so in summary, uh, the Argyle ISD Bond and Growth Planning Committee recommends that the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees call a bond election for May third, twenty twenty-five. And these are just some important dates to keep in mind. Uh, legally, the election must be called by the board by February fourteenth in order to make the May ballot. Uh, early voting would be between April twenty-second and April twenty-ninth, for anybody listening, uh, important dates. And then Election Day is going to be May third. So it just, at the very end, we just want to say thank you for having us tonight. And again, our hope is that this is a successful bond, uh, for the students and faculty and staff and all of us here in Argyle ISD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, um, I obviously, there's no, there's no action, but truly appreciate the committee, um, the time and effort, um, and and passion that you all have put into that. But thank you for giving us your information, uh, for us to spend now and between February twelfth.
Twelve, that's, we can have a special meeting on the twelfth, but the fourteenth is the deadline.
Right, um, to to be able to make a decision on calling this bond or not, so, um, we'll be doing our homework, probably reaching out, talking.
I did want to make sure, in case y'all had any questions too, we do have, we have our financial advisors here. Uh, we also have architect that was, that's helped us through this, throughout this process and working with that. Uh, so if anybody has questions for any of them, um, feel free to to ask. Um, I will, we do have access to our bond council as well if we need to. But I wanted to, I did want to say that there was a a really good question during the committee process. And we had someone ask about separating instructional, uh, projects on different propositions. We all know baseball softball has to be on its own proposition, but everything else is on a proposition A, if you if you will. Um, Liz, can you talk through that just a little bit? Cause I know you helped explain that to the committee based on what bond counsel our attorney shared with us.
Yes, ma'am. We went through the same question, um, during the last bond process and had the same.
You're you're being recorded. Is that mic work? Is her mic work? Okay.
It'll be louder if you want to move it over.
Okay, there you go.
There. Okay, so I was just saying that we had the same question during the last bond process and we got a recommendation from our attorney at that point. They recommended against it. Had the same question come up this time, so we've talked to him a couple of different times again. I mean, and, um, to split the instructional propositions, um, they said that you would have to be able to describe the projects and show that they're completely separate, no app, no overlapping circles like you see on a Venn diagram. Um, and then they went on to say that they strongly recommend to get splitting the instructional propositions, which is their stance.
Okay.
And recommendation to us.
Okay.
So as it stands, their recommendation, how many propositions would that, so you have facilities?
The baseball softball has to be, that's on its separate.
Everything else can go because technology's infrastructure?
It's infrastructure, yes, sir.
Okay.
So their recommendation will be A and a B?
So as far as our bonding capacity, how how close are we coming to what we're able to do on this one?
Hi, Matt and Julie.
Yeah.
You can paper rock scissors for it.
It's the chart with all the small numbers.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have it to share with you all, but. Uh, we did spend some time, um, sorry. Well, um, thank you for having us. We we appreciate the opportunity and, um.
Julie, will you introduce yourself?
Sorry, I'm Julie McMillan. I'm with RBC Capital Markets and Matt Bowles is also with RBC Capital Markets. And we've been the district's municipal advisor for, since nineteen ninety-four or something, so for a very long time. And we've worked with you throughout many of the iterations in the growth of the district over the last thirty years. And as you know, the district is currently at the fifty cent INS tax rate, which is the limitation, um, within the state of Texas, um, that you have to be able to pass that fifty cent test to be able to sell additional bonds, right? So we, uh, went back and, um, we met with the committee and, you know, worked through the district's bond plan, much like we did last time. Um, working with Liz a little bit on understanding where the growth is and that, given a number of circumstances, growth has probably slowed a little bit in the area. It's slowed everywhere. So that's not particular to Argyle. But then looking at the bond plan, you know, what, um, capacity? And as the same story that we've been telling for the last thirty years, patience and growth are going to be critical to the district's ability to to, you know, issue all this debt, you know? The bond election is not dead on the books. It's just the authorization to move forward, right? So if the students come at the pace that the, uh, demog- demographer is projecting, we do believe that we would be able to get this four hundred plus million done and keep you at fifty cents for the next several years and then, you know, create some capacity out in, it's about two thousand thirty-two for that next election, right? So you are, as you've grown into that fifty cents, you're pressing against that capacity. Uh, but we do believe that with growth and, you know, some patience, you'll be able to maintain that fifty cent tax rate and achieve these capital objectives, so.
And so there's a timeframe we kind of have to stay under and what we can sell when or how much we can sell when?
Yes, we, this, we have structured this based on some rough, you know, um, ideas from a timing perspective that these bond, that bonds would be sold sometime, you know, in between, you know, annually, really, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty. So you'd have some annual sales and it's it's, some of it's based on, uh, a a project flow based on the demographers, um, needs, saying, when do we need buildings online? And then working back from when those buildings need to come online to meet the enrollment requirements. And so it's then kind of, you know, feathering in these projects to try to hit those, uh, operational deadlines.
So, I mean, I'm thinking just specifically about land, which is obviously one of the first things you have to do. So are you saying the earliest that we could sell any bonds would be in twenty-six?
I'm sorry, we have twenty twenty-five. I'm, we have, we have a small amount of money left over from the technology piece of the twenty twenty-four election and I'm, sorry, I I kind of started from there. But no, we would be selling first in August of twenty-five, so I apologize. So it is sales from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty annually.
Okay.
Okay? And the land is probably, I can't remember. We actually worked on this with some projects based on a schedule that Liz gave us about how they want, how you all will need, you know, an elementary school here, this piece of the middle school for planning, this piece for land. And so there was a timetable where these projects were laid out a little bit more annually rather than in these priority groupings, and that's what we worked with to kind of set up the bond sale schedule, so. So you can't sell all four hundred million in twenty twenty-five. That would be kind of a surprise unless we have a great surprise at First Ranch and there's a hundred homes there by, you know, two hundred homes there by the end of the year. That's probably unlikely. But, uh, we do have it phased in to meet some of the opening or operational needs of the buildings based on the schedule that was given to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Could I ask Marty a question?
Yes, of course.
Let me just say, so, um, obviously inflationary costs on construction have been interesting, to say the least, the last few years. So in this current package, as you guys were reviewing everything, um, what are some of those, what are some of the calculations that are being used on the inflation?
Sure, so so you may remember last time we were using, um, we were using about seven and a half percent, uh, interest a year, right? So we're, and it was compounding out across across the year. Uh, we've backed that back to five percent, which, you know, we're hoping is is more realistic. Um, you know, there's some people that might say that's a little, that's a little too optimistic, but, um, I've seen anywhere from two and a half to 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 seven and a half still regularly in use. So we're kind of taking a middle of the road with regard to escalation. Um, with regard to, uh, cost of facilities, we, you guys bid, uh, middle school and elementary school. So we were able to take those two numbers and apply them to those particular projects at today's costs and then just apply the escalation. So we were able to use the identical square footage and dollar per foot that you guys have already realized, so we felt very strongly about that. Um, and we were able to engage your construction manager, Pogue, who's done all of your work recently and has a ton of experience in in North Texas as well as specific to Argyle ISD, to vet many of the numbers that we were using, uh, to, just to make sure that we were on, in line with with what they were seeing from an, from an industry standard as far as, uh, those costs moving forward.
So if we decide to change the design of a school, you know, of a school, like moving forward, I know we've kind of toyed with the idea of the elementary design, but that wouldn't be until elementary six. Um, but we'd still look at similar type of probably costs.
Yeah, I mean, we, the assumption is that you would have similar amenities, right? So you're going to have to still have a kitchen. You're still going to have many of the same kind of infrastructure, technology, sewer, bathrooms, those type of things, and that, and that you're not going to take a big jump, you know, to suddenly have, you know, gold ceilings and, you know, imported marble floors and things like that, right? So, um, as as long as you stick to kind of the, you know, what's been established from from an equity standpoint between your facilities, you should be, you should be in good shape even if the configuration changes. Now, if you, if you double the number of students, therefore doubling the square footage, then we'll have to, we'll have to look a little harder. But but working based on a similar square footage and similar amenities, you you'll be in good shape.
So right now, you're looking at, as far as capacity, I don't translate that to square feet, but, um, a middle school to being twelve hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
And an elementary being seven fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
Or eight fifty?
Eight hundred, I'm sorry, yeah.
Wishful thinking. Okay, sorry. I even take seven. Yeah, I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Westroom?
Well, I have a statement. I mean, um, you know, I thank y'all for bringing this to us and and working with the community. I guess one of the things I'm I'm, I would say is, you know, I mean, I like about the way we operate now is that we have a couple weeks or so to, um, get feedback. And I, and if the, if if there are members in the community that, um, are interested in this and have strong opinions about it, there's committee members here today and there's going to be, y'all are going to be available to them, I hope, to, um, help them, uh, understand how this package was built and 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 engage in that way, um, as we work over the next two weeks and study on it and decide what 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 we think is going to be right for the district. So I just appreciate your partner and on this and and making yourself available, not just in December and January, but in February, March, April and May as you, as we head forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, I just appreciate you guys willing us to dig in. This is not the the fun piece of education sometimes, having to look at the numbers and restrictions and bonding capacity and cost and things like that. And, um, I just, I appreciate all you guys, especially the thirty people that decided to come back and and do this again, um, to be able to come through and give us something that's, you know, workable for us. Um, so it's very much appreciated, well thought out.
Dr. Carpenter, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, the time is four forty-three, four forty-four, currently, and four forty-four P M. We are adjourned.